The clock, I'd like to open up the meeting. And I have one adjustment that I'd like to make to the agenda. Skip is here, he would like to nominate someone, a fellow named Michael Sadler to be on the Planning Commission. So I thought maybe we could do that after Maverick's presentation.
Perfect.
To that, too. Any other adjustments to the agenda?
I'm good.
I'm good.
All right. Any public comment at all? Don't hear any. Okay, so do I hear a motion to approve the bills to the town?
Yes. I'll do second then, Brian, I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from the January 25th, 2021 Select Board Meeting?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So Maverick, you are our co-host and we're ready to see what you have to show us. Thank you. And do you know one here, I guess most everybody has a name. On my screen, the top row is Brian Shatney, so Select Board Member, myself, Michael Gray, and then Paul Sarudy.
Hello.
He's also Select Board Member. To your right on my screen is Skip Lindsey, he's the Chair of the Planning Commission. And to your left is Chuck Batchelor, he's our Road Commissioner. And on the bottom left is Diana Peduzzi, she is the Town Clerk. And then this J U Z Z C, that's Robin Durkey, she's just kind of listening in. And I have a feeling the other Maverick Murphy might be your dad, I'm not sure.
Yep.
Okay. Good, so you have the screen.
Okay. Thanks for inviting me. My name is Maverick Murphy. I'm a resident of Woodbury, a graduate of Woodbury Elementary, and I'm currently a sophomore at Hazen Union. I'm interested in learning more about Woodbury's history and I'd also do some community service for the town by creating an interactive map. So currently on the Woodbury Town website, there is a map that has some town buildings, lakes and ponds, and other points of interest. But the new map would expand, organize, and add more information to that map. And that would be also included on the town website. It would be helpful to residents and tourists or visitors, and also town officials or educators. So right now I have six basic categories that could be included in the map. We can add on to this in the future or take some away if you think they're unnecessary. So the first one is historic homes. Second one is historic districts. The third one is lakes and ponds for fishing, swimming, or boating. The fourth one is vast trails for snowboarding, or sorry, snowmobiling or skiing. Fifth is hiking trails, and then lastly sixth is businesses. So I've created a sample map to kind of show you what it would be like. I've only added a few different sites in each of the categories, but I can share my screen to just show you what it looks like right now. So this is the overview of Woodbury. I don't have any of these categories on the left selected. To view the different layers, there are these checkboxes. So those can be selected to see the separate levels, or layers, I mean. I created this map using Google Maps, which I have access to through my OSSU account, but I believe the town would also be granted access because they're an organization. So if we want to just view the first category here, historic sites and structures, we can just select this box right here, and you see all these houses pop up on the map. I've color coordinated these also, each of the categories. So historic sites and structures, I've chosen that to be black, so you can see all the icons are black. And then the separate icon shapes represent different things. For example, this is a historic house, and then this right here could represent a barn or a complex of houses and different structures. I've based these historic sites and structures off of the surveys done by the State of Vermont Division for Historic Preservation from the 1980s that are also included as files on the Woodbury website, but I've...
Maverick, your mic is muted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, so I've used the surveys off the town website and transferred the information onto these historic houses right here. So just as an example, we can look at the prior farm right here. When one of these areas or houses is selected, it highlights it on the map, so you can see where it is. And for each house, I've included the address of the house, the date it was built, and also the architectural style. And then down here in the photos, if you click on these, you're able to see photos of the house taken when the surveys were done, so in the early 80s. And then also I've included the images of the surveys. And I've done that for each of the houses, and also the historic districts, which we can look at next. So historic districts, the second level, or second layer, and I've used the line feature to do these. So if we click on this, we can see that the historic district is outlined by this white line. And again, I've used information from the historians' surveys to get the information for these houses. And something different about this one is I just included the historical significance, which I also got off of the surveys on the town website. So if you just want to learn about this one, it's a community created from immigrants to work on the Woodbury Quarry. I thought that was pretty interesting. And then again, we have the photos, the date it was built, and I've also included the original owner for this one. Back to the map, the next category is lakes and ponds, so we can zoom out again to see where this is in Woodbury. And Nelson Pond, that's another, or that's one pond near my house, so I just chose that one for an example. If we click on it, it will highlight it on the map, and then this pop-up menu on the left side of the page comes up with more information about this specific lake. And I got this information off of the Vermont Fish and Wildlife website, and I think it'd be useful to people coming to boat or fish. And then I also included the type of fish in the lake, which I think would be important to fishermen. You can embed links in the Google Maps. So for this, I included a separate resource, which was a depth chart from the Vermont Gov website. So if we just click on this, we can see, it brings you to a depth chart, which is pretty interesting. Um, so back to the map, I think this is pretty much it for Nelson Pond. I also made these, all of the lakes and ponds would be blue, this blue color, I thought that just kind of represented ponds well. Um, next is hiking trails. For this one, I again use the line feature on Google Maps to just map out what the trail kind of looks like from an overview. And I chose Nichols Ledge just because I'd visited it and I had pictures taken of it, just as an example. And in the description, I included the trail length, difficulty, and the seasons it's open. And then this picture my brother took, I included this one also. Just so people who'd never been there could see what the top was like, because that's the nicest part. Um, back to the map. Next one is Vermont Association of Snow Travelers or Vast Trails. I have very little information about the Vast Trails so far, but I just included a section by my house that I just knew. I believe that the Mountain Tamers are the organization that maintains the trails in Woodbury.
That's true.
And, yeah, if this idea is approved, I would like to reach out to them to see if they have more maps of the complete trail map of all the trails, the Vast Trails in Woodbury. Yeah, so this is...
Maverick, I have the name of the person to contact for the Mountain Tamer, so I'll get that to you.
Okay, thank you. Lastly, businesses. I just added three as an example, we can look at the Sheep Shop right now. This icon could indicate a retail store, which is what this is. Yeah, the type of business, I included contact information and also the website address. Yeah, so that's pretty much it for now. I'll continue to add more points if this idea is approved, and I'll also reach out to people possibly by frontboard form to see if people have more information about town, or sorry, ponds and lakes, or hiking trails, or local businesses, just to make sure I get everything in the map and I have all of the information. And I'd be happy to teach any authorized user or a town official how to use this or how to edit it in the future. It's a pretty simple website to use. Um, yeah, and I'd be happy to hear any feedback or questions or ideas you guys have. Yeah.
I have, I have one comment, Maverick, and maybe some others, as I think about it more, but seeing the trail up to the top of Nichols Ledge, I know that's basically on private land, it's not a public trail. And I know there was an issue, a number of years ago, there was some kind of bus touring group that publicized that trail and were bringing tour groups up there. And the property owner, or actually the person who manages the property for the property owner, asked them to take that information off their listing, because, I mean, there is a trail there, and the people that own it do not mind people going up there, but they, they did not want it to be publicized. Just for, I guess for liability issues, I'm not sure. So this may become an issue with other sites that we might want to put on there, we may, I mean, I can look into that, maybe Diana has some thoughts about private property that gets listed. Some of these places are private homes that still exist, and you know, the old historical buildings, and yet they are on our website. So there may be some privacy issues, public use issues that, you know, we may need to get clearance for. So that's just something that I'm aware of, and that the Nichols Ledge Trail kind of brought that up for me.
Yeah, I'd be happy to look into that, or contact the homeowners if that's what needs to be done. I'm not sure what steps you would take.
Yeah, that's another possibility.
Yeah. And we could try to help you with that, too. Yeah. So I, you know, I think this is a great, great idea, it'll be a great asset, I think, and it's, I love the different layers to it, where you can kind of go to other, other information, you know, like the thing with Nelson Pond and seeing the depth levels, that was, that's kind of cool.
Yeah, very good idea, this is very nice.
Yeah.
Maverick, what kind of approval were you looking for?
Um, just to keep working on it, I didn't want to get too far along, or to include it on the town website, whatever.
Do you, do you need any kind of town approval for the, for your school at all?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I'll reach out to you if I do, but not that I know of.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly don't have any objections, and I don't know how Brian and Paul feel about that.
No objections.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we're definitely... Skip, do you have a question? Can't hear you, Skip.
Did Skip break the internet?
Can't hear you.
He did, he knows how to fix it.
Yeah, we know a good computer guy.
He does the show, it's being muted.
Still not able to hear you, Skip. Can't hear.
There should be a sign for that, like...
That was a good one, Diana.
Looks like his screen might be frozen, too, he might have a connection...
Connectivity issue.
Yeah.
It's a great idea, Maverick. Yeah, maybe long overdue.
Oh.
Thanks.
Skip, can you hear us now? You can't, we can't hear you.
You can always just email me if his microphone doesn't look working.
He does have your email address. Still can't hear you, Skip.
He's probably got your wood-fired internet there, Mike.
So this would be, Maverick, you would work on this for a while longer before it goes on the website, right?
Yeah, I think the best idea maybe would to, or would be to add it in stages, because I think if I really did want to continue with this, it could last for a few years. But I don't think you guys would want to wait that long to post it, so...
You could work as a permanent fixture for you to work on.
Yes.
You're gonna find the rule of volunteering.
We'll make you the Woodbury Webmaster.
We need a new one.
Here we do, actually. So Maverick, I also let the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission know of this project, there's a great contact person there, her name is Pam DeAndrea, and I can give you her contact information if you'd like to, to contact her. She is pretty much head of the GIS, I can never remember what that stands for, but she's a, her, one of her things is, is making maps. And she might be a good advisor if you, if you wanted to ask questions. And then, you know, the Planning Commission, this community mapping forum that we'll be doing next Tuesday, you'll get to see a couple of folks from Fish and Wildlife who work with town planning, but also do a lot of work with maps. So it's pretty amazing what they're able to do. There's also another agency of natural resources, map source, it's called BioFinder. It is more related to natural resources, but that's another great set of maps to, to play around with. I'm not sure if you're aware of those or not, but there's, there's probably more, like you said, there's more information that you, than you would probably ever want to know about some of those, but, but, but those are other resources, and I'll, I'll put together like a little kind of connecting or contact sheet that I'll, I'll send to you. There's Skip. Skip, are you still...
I can hear you. Okay, cool.
Good.
Yeah, you know, we're, we're underserved so much in Woodbury, you know, with internet. But anyhow, Maverick, I have access to the 911 mapping system for the entire state. And it's, it's a GIS-based map application that's free where, in that, you know, everyone in the state pays for. So I can send you that link. And within that map application are layers, including what you had mentioned, vast trails. So it'll show you the vast trails through Woodbury.
Okay.
And all you have to do is click on the layers, and up a pop, among other things, vast trails, or what other churches, anything you really, I think, could utilize in your project. And I'll send you that link, and perhaps you and I can, you know, get together for like 15 minutes, and I can show you how to, you know, cruise around on the app and glean from it what you need.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Another thing that people might be interested in is property lines, that we do have access to, those are all public information on the A and R website, and also on our website.
Can keep you busy for a while.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that 911 map also has parcel mapping, too. So if you really want to get granular with your project, you can get right down to the parcel.
Granular, yes.
Yeah, that's really granular.
Yeah, so this is, well, and I'm really delighted that you're taking up this project and willing to help the town, you know, have a really interesting map to play around with. It'll be a great addition to the website.
Yeah, I'm happy to do it.
Great.
You said you're a sophomore?
Yeah, at Hazen.
So you've got a couple more years.
Yeah, you can work on this.
Or you can do it at some other university.
Right. Yeah. So at any time that you get stuck or need some help, or just have questions, you know, contact any, any of us really, and we'll try to, to either connect you to the person to answer it, or try to answer it ourselves, anything that we can do to help. So, you know, we'd be glad, at least speaking for myself, and I'm sure everyone else feels the same, we'd be glad, be glad to do that.
Absolutely.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions for Maverick at all?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Do you have any other questions at all, Maverick, for, or comments that you'd like to share before we move on to the next agenda item?
Not right now, I have your email though, so...
Okay, great. All right. Nice to meet you, and thank you very much. Look forward to seeing the fruits of your labor.
Yes.
Okay, see ya. Yeah. So, next on the agenda, Skip, I'm gonna give you the screen.
Hey.
The screen. Instead of the floor.
No, thank you, thank you for giving me the screen. So, I know you, you folks probably understand that we're in the throes of putting together a town plan. So right now, there are five members of the Planning Commission, and a gentleman reached out to me, a gentleman named Michael Sadler. He's recently moved into South Woodbury, and he reached out and he wanted to know some information, the Planning Commission. And he's really keen on joining us and helping us through with this project, and then long-term staying on the Planning Commission, you know, to help with the zoning issues that are, that are gonna crop up after the town plan gets, gets authorized and approved. So he's a new resident of Woodbury, and, you know, his, his credentials are impeccable. Let me just pull them up.
Yeah, they're pretty amazing.
Yeah. He currently works for the State of Vermont, he's an environmental analyst, and he's more, mostly focused on technical reviews of permitting documents, design recommendation, compliance inspections, design analysis, hydrocads, regularly, regulatory assistance. He's, he deals mostly with stormwater and stormwater runoff issues. But his background, he's a, has a background in project management, which is great, you know, he and I have... Gee. Is that, it's not here.
It's my stomach.
So, you know, he's a, he's a project manager as well, and he understands GAMP charts.
Oh my God.
Yeah, I know, I was just...
Granular geek GAMP charts.
You're in heaven, Skip.
Yeah, you know, he was great, he actually knew what a task was in a milestone, payment milestone, you know, so anyhow, we had, we had a nice chat.
Good.
So, you know, I highly recommend that the Select Board authorize this gentleman to join the Planning Commission. I think he would be a tremendous asset, especially, no, Diana, you can't...
I'm not voting, I'm just raising my hand.
Especially where we are now in the, in the town plan rewrite.
Do you need authority to increase the membership of the Planning Commission from five to seven? You might check it out.
Well, I checked it out, Diana.
Oh.
So, yeah, did you think I wasn't gonna check it out?
Well, some people might not know that's even an issue.
No, you can have up to nine members in a Planning Commission.
Yeah.
Planning Commission, you know, is, the appointees are appointed by the legislative body in a town, or a municipality or city, whatever that is. So we have the three Select Board members here, and they can appoint just by, they can do it unanimously, or two out of three, but they have the authority to appoint folks to the Planning Commission. And conversely, they have authority to ask people to leave the Planning Commission as well.
So, Brian, Michael is a neighbor of ours. I don't know if you know him or not.
I don't.
He lives down, he, at David, David Zahn's house.
Okay.
Partner of David's daughter.
All right.
They're the folks that walk that big dog by the, our houses.
Go by.
Yeah.
Is that the Ridgeback? Hmm? Is that the Rhodesian Ridgeback?
It could be, it's a big dog, I don't know what kind of dog it is.
So are you looking to have him appointed tonight?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm in, I'm in favor of that, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Any, any more discussion at all about that? All right, all, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
He's on.
Great. I'll, I'll drop him an email and start feeding him all the information we have for the energy plan, which is in final draft mode, and then all the information regarding where we are right now in the project.
Okay. Could you send me his email address? Also, there's a, a meeting for, coming up, actually, it's this Friday, for some of the projects down in the village, some of the erosion mitigation projects, and knowing of his background, I'd like to invite him to just sit in on it, if, if he would.
Sure.
If he can.
Yeah, he was, he cautioned me that anything that might interfere with his state job, he would recuse himself.
Sure.
You know, and that's, that's only natural, that, you know, he wants to preserve his, his employment with the state, and, you know, I totally get that.
Yeah.
So you can extend him the invitation, he may or may not...
Yeah.
...to join you.
Okay, yeah, it may not work, it's kind of a late date to try to schedule something, too.
Yeah, but he's gonna be great, you know.
Yeah.
As soon as he said he knew what a GAMP chart was, he had my vote.
That sold you, huh?
I don't wanna know.
Okay.
Well, I still don't know, Paul, and I sort of know what they are, but I still...
I'm at the point where it's like, I know enough for now.
Well, you know, I could teach you, but I don't know.
I'm slow.
He may not want to know.
It might, it might work well with your, if you get your fire department funded.
This is true, this is true.
I could write a project plan for the construction area.
Oh, perfect.
Building. But then it would cost...
It's good for timelines and stuff.
Yeah, perfect.
Yeah, so, anyhow, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. And I'll be signing off.
Okay.
Have a good night.
See ya.
Bye-bye.
Bye. So, Town Clerk's Report.
Oh geez.
That's you.
Yeah.
Pressure's on, pressure's on.
Oh, here we go, my list, my list, not very short.
Perfect.
So I was, all this crazy stuff that keeps changing, I'm learning every day. Last week, I learned that our printer, L. Brown and Company, can not only print our print address and mail our town reports, they can also, I contacted this other mailing company to talk about mailing the ballots, and then I found out that L. Brown can also stuff our envelopes, print the name on the envelope for every voter in town, and send it out at their highly reduced postage rate, so I don't have to be, Robin and I don't have to be spending this week stuffing envelopes.
Perfect.
So it's like...
Sounds good.
Cool.
One-stop shopping, sounds good.
Yeah, so our postcard that was, I was hoping that the postcard would go out earlier, but, you know, anyways, postcard went out, I think on Friday, I got ours today.
Yeah, we got ours today.
And then the town report and the envelope with all the ballots in it should be in the mail within the next few... few days. Sometime later this week, I hope.
Perfect.
Yeah. So, uh, we, wait till you see the ballots for the school district of Hazen.
Little complicated.
Oh, they put in all this little stuff. I wish, I really wish I had reached out to them, um, and say, why do we have to vote on paying zero dollars to the school board? I mean, that's just, people are gonna be so confused. But, yeah, but whatever. I didn't do it and nobody else thought that. They just, I mean, they do Australian ballots all the time, but they've always only done the budget by Australian ballot. I don't know when these other important decisions got made, like whether or not to pay the school board or twenty-five hundred dollars to pay the school board treasurer. Anyways, now we're all gonna have to do those. So there's gonna be a lot of counting, I'm sorry, for Alberta on the town meeting night. It's gonna be a nightmare.
Does the school ballot counting go somewhere else?
Yeah, it all goes to.
Yeah.
So there's a double-sided ballot for Hardwick, for Hazen and a double-sided ballot for, uh, the elementary union district.
Wow.
So there'll be two, uh, two boxes to call out to Hardwick and I'm gonna try to line up a few more extra helpers for, um, to help with the counting. And they have to do it in the fire department because they're not allowed to use the school, so I don't know how she's gonna manage to, um, spread out a lot of people in that fire department. I guess we're gonna have to take everything out and.
They got quite a bit of room behind some of their rigs on one side.
Yeah. I've only been in there when we were doing the dog registration and then they only opened up the front.
Yeah, no, they got, they got quite a bit of space down there.
Hopefully, there won't be a fire while there's.
That would throw a little wrench in the works.
Probably be outside. Yeah.
You never know.
So.
So, Diane, I'm willing to volunteer for the torture of going there and, and helping with the ballot counting.
Okay. Um, we're gonna try to get Steve to do it too, because he's the one that signed the ballot for the, he's Brian. Have him take the Hazen box out there. Well, there was something else, um. So anyways, I followed up, you know, I didn't come right out and ask whether every, every, whether we had to put return postage on the envelopes. Hardwick is doing it and Greensboro isn't, so. Yeah, we're already different. Yeah. Yeah. And the ballot, uh, the ballot is filled out. Well, there is a nominee for select board. His name is Chris Codius.
Oh, wow.
He's a geology professor, lives down the road here, um, where John Brevin used to live. They got a couple. They've been here a while. And, uh, so he, there's still two auditor positions where there's no candidates and two cemetery commission positions where there's no candidates. Oh, I know. The other thing is, after all this learning of stuff last week, I finally decided that we can use the tabulator.
Okay.
So our part is gonna be a lot easier. I went through all this trouble to try to, um, minimize the ballot so we wouldn't have a counting nightmare and now it doesn't matter. Gonna use the tabulator, but the only thing that could make it complicated is there's a lot of write-ins and because we do have a select board nominee now, um, hopefully, there won't be a ton of write-ins. But every time there's a write-in, that ballot has to be counted by hand.
Got it.
Could, could the OSSU actually get a tabulator for?
You know, I talked to Alberta about that a while ago and I said, you know, she, I said, at the time, I said, you could even borrow ours because I wasn't planning to use it. Your ballots are not made up in the right way. They weren't.
But they could, they could be.
They could have been, but, but I don't think the people who made up the ballots at OSSU had any idea what the options were.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, well.
Oh, well. So thank you, Michael, for bringing that black beast upstairs and.
Sure.
Couple weeks, you can bring it down to the town hall.
Okay.
Robin, I gotta remember to have you, uh, put the, turn the water back on there.
Just holler to me when they're ready.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I can do it.
You do that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Well, I turn our valve on. Hopefully, there's no leaks on the other side.
So all the warnings are posted. Um, I sent the warning in to the Woodbury email list, um. The, uh, person from the LHS, who's the people, the people that do the tabulator, um, our ballots are printed by L Brown and they know how to do it. They did all the ballots for the general election for the whole state. So what they do when we get ours, I finally gave her the go-ahead last Monday when I got that last name and they'll, uh, print up the ballots and they send a handful of them down to LHS, which is the company that programs the tabulator. And then they'll send us, either send us or bring us the cards that go in the tabulator.
Great.
So hopefully, that'll go smoothly.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any, anything else, Diana? Any, any questions for Diana?
Thank you for taking care of all that, Diana.
Well, it's been, it's been interesting. Lots of new and different stuff. I'm trying to keep, uh, robbing up today, although she won't have a, uh, I mean, the new clerk won't have, uh, another election for a couple of years, so.
We're hoping things to be less interesting in the next year.
Right.
My hope.
Yeah, everything's gonna go back to normal.
Needs to be less interesting. We've had interesting for a while.
Yeah, really. Okay.
Okay. So, um, I don't see Brandy here, so I'm just gonna briefly, um, she read off some, uh, just some figures that she printed out, um, for me to share. So for, uh, revenue to the town from the last couple of weeks, um, let's see, cash receipts total, um, two thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars. Delinquent taxes collected totaled two thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-one cents. And then, um, payroll totaled, um, ten thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and accounts payable totaled, um, ten thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars. So, so she transferred forty-five thousand dollars from the money market fund into the general fund. And then, uh, just some updates from, um, from Brandy that she created an invoice, um, for the, uh, uh, grant that the conservation commission got for the town trail. And I think it finally, it did get all filled out. And she sent it into the, um, the agency that's overseeing the grant and is, is still waiting for, um, payment for that reimbursement, basically. Um, there's an equipment grant, um, that, um, trying to get some other things checked off on the list of, I remember it was like a month or two ago, there was this list of different things passive came through and they inspected the town office and the town garage and some of the other town buildings and they had, um, recommendations to remedy different situations that they, um, they were concerned about. One was behind the firehouse. I think that the fire department took care of cutting.
The tree that was touching the building.
Yep. Tim Higgins apparently will be coming to the town office to, um, rectify some electrical things that they pointed out. And then there's a string of things down at the town garage, um, that I'll probably go down, um, and show them to Greg, um, and, and get them to take care of those. Um, do you have a question, Diana?
Well, Greg was here today and he saw Brandy's note and he said it was his understanding that all that stuff was finished. They had taken pictures of it and sent it to Larry Sniff at BLCT.
Okay, all right.
Same thing, right?
Yeah, I believe it has been taken care of. Greg and I were over there doing it one day.
Okay, good. All right. Well, then I won't do that. Sounds like it's already done.
Brandy has an email that has to be responded to, I guess.
Yeah, they, they have, what they'll want is a plan of corrective action or you to send them a note saying it's all been repaired.
Yeah, there's some type of form that she has to fill out.
Yeah.
And then, um, the reason that the town will get reimbursed fifty percent of any costs that we, the town incurred in, uh, making those corrections. So that, that's why Brandy's kind of on this to get, to get the, uh, everything completed. I guess if, uh, if we don't complete everything, um, the town would get forty percent, but, you know, Brandy's going for the fifty percent, so.
That's good.
Yeah, so, um, okay.
Yeah, he didn't tell us that when the guy came around making all those recommendations.
Yeah, I didn't know that from the first, first time it was presented to us, but, um, but I do know. So, good, um. Okay, and that's pretty much all that, um, that she had for me to share. So I think we're good with the town treasurer report. Any, any questions about that at all? Not that I'd be able to answer them, but.
We all, I got my old packet from her, so.
Okay, all right.
The reading materials right here.
Yeah.
Wants to read it.
Okay. Um, did you have a question, Robin? No, okay. All right. So I guess we can move on, um, to the town highway report. And I'll give you the screen, Chuck.
The moment? Yeah, I don't have much to say. I haven't, I tried calling Greg today and I missed him and I haven't talked to him for over a week. With the low pro, I called Greg and told him we were gonna put smaller tires on it and he told, he told me that he had talked to, uh, Charlie Boyce and that that truck could be ordered with that size tires, eleven hundred tires on it. And he gave me the number and I called him and the guy down there said that the tire size wouldn't make any difference with.
Okay.
So Greg and I decided that, you know, they're all mounted up, all on it, that we're gonna leave them. If we decide something, we'll do it in spring.
Right. Okay. Yeah.
Um, other than that, that's about all.
I, I, at our last select board meeting, there was, in the bills, it looked like we had paid for the, um, the mower brush cutter. Is that true? Have we, have we ordered that, paid for it, or?
Yeah.
I don't.
They were in advance.
We paid the bill, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
That should be sometime the end of, the second two weeks, April, first week of May or something.
Good.
Put it right to work.
Yeah.
Put that.
Put it right to work.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. As soon as the roads are hard enough to hold the loader up.
Yeah.
Uh, one thing I think we need to think about, maybe next month, the greater we're having a problem losing antifreeze and we think we got that because the pressure cap was bad on the radiator. But the air compressor is putting a fair amount of oil into the air tanks. And I think we need to talk to Caterpillar about having the air compressor replaced on that.
Okay.
And I would like to see it happen before it was time to put it to work.
Okay.
Agreed.
Do you think it should happen before, like if we get more snow, I know they often use that to push the banks back. Would it be good to try to get it fixed before that?
Oh, it won't make that much difference.
Make that much difference, okay.
I, when May, when it's.
Working every day, yeah.
It'll be working every day.
Yeah.
So, um, I'm thinking maybe that I'll get ahold of Caterpillar and see about making an appointment for them to go up and at least check it out.
Okay, yeah.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get it done soon as possible.
Yeah, well, yeah, sometime in March. I'd like to see it done in March.
Yeah.
By the end of March, so. But I'll call them someday this week.
Okay. Yeah. I got a couple emails just complimenting the road crew on the condition of the roads this winter.
Nice.
Yeah.
And I, yeah, pass along for me, do they been, they've been doing a pretty good job. Uh, they've kept it and it's the, the timeframes, we need the roads taken care of, they're keeping them taken care of and, and coming again if they need to. So it's, it's, uh, you can pass along, they're doing a good job.
Good, I will. I will. Uh, Greg and I talked about it quite a lot last Sunday. Um, Kelsey Silk called and couldn't get his car home.
Yeah.
And he had to come out on a Sunday and said that Greg said there weren't really any need to, but he did, I called him and asked him to, so.
Okay. Yeah, that's a chronic problem for that person.
That's what I hear.
Yeah, because I got the call and before I could talk to him, he had called you apparently that day.
Oh, yeah.
Already taken care of it.
Yeah. Yeah. So other than that, that's about all I got. I'm glad to hear they're doing a good job.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lucky there hasn't been much snow.
Yeah. We're having that one to two inches a day type snow, which is a pain.
Yeah, just a pain in the butt, yeah. Um, I, I can't think of anything else, I guess.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions for Chuck at all?
No, I'm good.
No, okay. So, um, we'll move on to the personnel policy and I'll, I'll get that up on the screen. I think, um, we could just, I did incorporate, uh, changes that we had discussed in previous meetings and Paul, I got in the things that you sent. I just, I got them.
Deciphered this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Talk about them.
Yeah.
So let me get that up on the screen here. Hang on a second. I do the uh, share screen. Hang on. Uh, let me go back here. There, uh, there it is. Okay, so let me get rid of this. Um, hang on, I gotta get rid of faces here so I can see the thing. Well. Okay, um, I should be able to see if I can make this thing move now. Okay, so let's get to so, um, I'll stop when I see some red. So under, there are different parts where the, um, road foreman had been designated, um, as the direct supervisor, so I changed those to road commissioner. Um, I think there's just a couple spots. So all of this that we're looking at now is all, you know, for hiring somebody new and kind of the steps that we would wanna follow, that they're designated in the personnel policy. So we'll be dealing with this when we, uh, when we initiate, um, uh, a third full-time employee. So this stuff will.
What you pro, pro, uh, the probation period, how long is that?
Uh, six months, if I, if I remember right. Let's get, yeah.
Right there.
Yep. Town, no, new town employees, uh, six-month probationary period. And then during that period, the employee can be terminated at any time, um, for any reason, really.
Does that have to include in any plowing before they can get off their probation?
Well, I guess it depends on when they start.
Yeah, that would be the issue.
Yeah. So, and I think we're looking to have someone start probably for summer.
Well, the budget passed. We could start that July first, right?
Right, yeah. So it could probably include some of, um, we'll, we'll figure that out, but that's a good point, Robin. We might wanna have, um, the six-month period take in a little bit of winter plowing. the six-month period take in a little bit of winter plowing.
I think it should.
Okay, alright, alright, so we'll, at some points, at some point soon, we should probably get that on the agenda and start, you know, talking, discussing
Yeah.
Hiring of a third.
After town meeting day, you know, we're assuming that budget passes and we can start working on that would probably be the appropriate time.
That would be the appropriate time, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Uh, so let's so these are all stuff that we read and forget, pretty much. Some of this kind of boilerplate, so, okay, so here we go. So this is pretty much what we're, we've been working on, Chuck, is the paid leave time. There are a bunch of different categories. So everything that's in red in this section has been on the the revision for a while now. We looked at it this summer. I added, I just added a definition for employees, because technically the only real employees that are a part of the personnel policy are the town highway department members, the road crew. And then this other section for green is is one of the changes that we discussed this summer, fall about let's see, the the paid leave time, with the exception of sick time, and I just put that, it seemed like if somebody's sick, they probably don't need to get permission from the road commissioner.
They shouldn't have to, I wouldn't think.
Yeah, yeah, especially in our COVID times. So, but any other paid leave time, basically that they would need approval from the road. So.
I would just say, instead of having it as suggested, just make that a mandatory language.
Okay.
Employee shall request paid leave time on a day-for-day basis.
Okay. Oh, suggested, right, so right here, actually, what if I could do?
Change it to more of a mandatory language.
Right, let's see if I could do that right now.
No pressure.
Yeah, no, okay, well, I'll I'll remember that, hopefully.
That's an easy one, because that would leave it up to someone's opinion and we didn't want to do that.
Right, that, I'm aware of of that type of wording, yeah, so let me just make a note, so I remember. So, and I, I'm gonna get a copy of that that request form from Brandy so that we could have that right in the you know, in the, and in the personnel policy, probably in one of the appendixes at the end, or so I kept the wording for the day-for-day basis, put an example in. But then, again, this is kind of a suggested thing, the last sentence requests for leave leave are best made as far in advance as possible to ensure.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I like that.
Yeah, okay, alright, so let's see, moving on here, where's the? Whoops, hang on, went too far. Come on. Okay, so we're done with it, so sick time. This is all, this is nothing new that's in the red. We've looked at that earlier this summer.
Yeah.
And then the criteria, which were, was part of the old personnel policy. And then vacation time. Hang on. So it can get us back up, oh, goddamn.
Being fussy.
Excuse my French. Or whatever, I guess that's pretty much English, isn't it?
Yeah. It was garbled, we didn't hear it.
Okay. How can I make this go just a little bit?
You know, while you're doing that, I'd like to make a comment.
Sure, anytime you want to make a comment, Diana, please do.
Thank you. As far as the town clerk and town treasurer being eighteen hours a week, I don't really think that should be in the personnel policy. I think it's really up to the clerk and treasurer how much time they need to do their job.
Well, I think that's
has worked for for us.
Right, the eighteen hours a week is ba, that's kind of the prorated basis.
But any leave time could be prorated based on the actual hour, you know, if the next town clerk decides she wants to work twenty-five hours a week and have an assistant only for four hours a week, you know, it's just.
Yeah, well, that's that's something that would probably need to be discussed with the select board and we could change it then. I think, you know, that eighteen hours came from basically looking at the average number of hours that the town clerk and the town treasurer had had you know, what they had and from time sheets. I think that's where that came from.
Well, I think it would, as far as I'm concerned, it carried over from when Marcia was here.
No, that was a change after Marcia.
Really?
I I remember. I remember being on the select board when we did that.
Basically, those were the hours that the office was open.
Computers having a
Yeah, no, I can't get it to go, just, it was still going nice and slow for a while. Okay. So this is okay, figured it out. Okay, here we go, so, okay, so here's vacation time. So, yeah, we can, we can discuss this eighteen hours a week, maybe when Brandy's here, or when Robin is or when we have a new town clerk. So, make that assumption. So I crossed out the line about the end of every fiscal year, the town may compensate an employee for any vacation time accrued. We had mentioned that we no longer wanted to do that.
Right.
And that basically the only time that an employee would receive a payment for accrued vacation time is is when they decide to leave their job.
Correct.
I think, which is stated here. The result, the last sentence that any employee who resigns from employment with the town will be compensated for no more than a hundred and sixty hours of accrued and unused vacation leave.
Perfect, yep.
Yeah, okay. So I'll delete that sentence. And then personal time is, don't think much has changed there. This is all pretty much the same. So here we are, here we are, comp time. So that, this is in red, I should have probably had it in in green, the new, the new text, but it's pretty much so we have, actually, I guess probably instead of having May, I should probably have Will.
Right.
In or shall?
Yeah, they shall request compensatory mod from that. So what the idea was, and Chuck and Wayne, we kind of talked about this, is some of the employees are still wanting to get comp time and what this would do is leave it at the discretion of the road commissioner. If, you know, if someone says, hey, I worked eight hours today, I'd like to put it in its comp time, he could say yes. And then it kind of sets the rules for the use of that time.
Yeah.
Along with our leave request policy.
At the discretion of the road commissioner or the
crew. Yes, the road.
The road commissioner.
Do we want to have some kind of written request?
Well, it would be the leave form. Well, as far as asking for it?
Yes. I mean, if if a person wanted to cash in on their comp time, then they would have to use a paid leave request form, but do we want to have them request?
So I think the request would be the signing of the time sheet.
Okay.
If you sign the time sheet with comp time on it, it would mean that it had been approved.
Okay.
Does the road commissioner sign the time sheets now?
No.
Electronically or otherwise, no?
That's the only, I know you were in the summer, right, Chuck?
Yes.
Okay.
So we have to deal with the wintertime. Again, we're dealing with Chuck now, but this could be anybody at some point.
And if they decide they want it, they really, they all got my telephone number, they really call me and say, hey, can I put this in comp time?
Yeah, because this is kind of a middle ground to having it unlimited or just getting rid of it altogether.
Yeah, and
Yeah.
And it gives, it gives us some control over when it
Right.
Actually happens and yeah.
As long as it, you've got it situated, it reads like you do, that it don't get all bunched up in June, I don't care.
Right, because you'd have to say, yes, I'm gonna let you earn comp time, and then you'd also have to approve when they take it.
Yeah, right, so, so, you know, if they have, and the limit is, we could limit, could make it less than forty hours, forty hours was what was
Yeah, that's not a bad limit, that that's one week.
Yeah, one week.
Yeah, but the thing of it is, you're paying them time and a half in comp time. You should cut that back so you get a week off and not forty hours of comp time.
Well, yeah, they'd have to work, what, thirty hours to get that forty hours?
Yeah, I don't know exactly what it is, but
Yeah, whatever.
But I think that should be their limit, that they can earn up to one forty-hour week of comp time.
Right, and that's what this is saying, it's got forty hours as the maximum.
Yeah, but that's forty hours of comp time, and that you're paying time and a half for your comp time.
Right.
Well, when we pay comp time, I believe we pay those out at straight time hours.
I believe that, that's
No, no, big, comp time is is basically replacing overtime.
Right, right, so what I'm saying, if you work an hour, well, how this usually works is you work an hour, we'll have to, Brandy can clear it up when, if she was here, but
Actually, it's it's here in the text, Paul, hang on, let me get there.
Yeah, because what happens is you work an hour and you get an hour and a half of comp time, that's that fixes it, because the the comp time's paid back at straight time rates.
Well, what I'm saying is that you should limit it so that they get a week's pay for they can have thirty hours of comp time, but they'll still get paid for forty.
Move downward, so we'd have to uncross this line, Michael, where your arrow is. It says comp time will be accrued at a rate of one point five hours of time for each hour worked.
Okay.
For more than forty hours. So what that does, Chuck, is they would, it would necessarily set it straight at forty hours, at straight time, because they're earning it at time and a half.
So let's go through these terms, so the first first bullet that's up here. An employee may accrue a maximum of forty hours of comp time, or do we want to say thirty hours?
Well, the next line down fixes it, Mike, because you, when you accrued by, when you earn it.
Okay.
Because if you work an hour, you get an hour and a half of time.
Yeah.
So you'll get to your forty hours, when they pay out that forty hours, it's at straight time, because you've earned more time than what you actually worked.
Okay, so we'll keep that sentence there, I'll incorporate that.
I would put that one back, because that fixes the problem that Chuck had talked about.
Okay. So second bullet, keep, alright. Okay, let's just look at some of the other.
Right, see, right, the next line says, employee receiving payment for accrued but unused comp time will be paid at the hourly rate, straight time.
Yeah.
So I guess you want to erase that line, too.
Keep that one, too.
Yeah.
So, and probably the fourth one.
Or, yeah, so it brings kind of all that stuff back in again.
Yeah. How about the very last bullet?
Well, we kind of covered that up above, so we could probably take that one out.
Okay, alright, so third. Yeah, I'll look, I'll I'll look at that again and redo it and then send it back out to you guys.
Everybody kind of on the same page.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so everything up here.
I think that's a good middle ground, that way it's still available, but if, you know, if the road commissioner thinks we don't need it right now, you don't get it.
Yeah. So how about this second paragraph? This was kind of an explanation that that you sent, Paul, with the state, is, does that sound clear to everybody?
And I'll explain what it means. If you, if you earn, so if I earn an hour of comp time between July first of this past summer and June thirtieth, I have the following, this year and the following year to use it.
Yeah.
Or I would be paid for it, or I would be told I had to use it. And so that's, it's always kind of keeping a rolling, a rolling average of time. Your other choice is, it it kind of stops the problem Chuck had last year, well, I earned eight hours of comp time, I got to use it in June. Nope, if you earned it in this fiscal year, you got the next fiscal year to use it, too, so you don't have to burn it up.
Yeah.
That's why that's written like that.
And as long as there's a limit on it so that they can't earn another forty hours in the next
Right, it's it's a maximum of forty total hours. So if they got forty hours and they say they got to take it off June first, the only reason that would be true is it had been earned the previous fiscal year. If they earn it this winter, they got all next winter to use it, too, or all summer.
Yeah. So, I just, I'm just thinking of another scenario, Paul, so if they did sit on it until, let's say, June twenty-ninth of the, end of the fiscal year, following when they, when they had accrued it. What would be their, I mean, obviously, they're they're going to be coming to the road commissioner a day ahead of time and saying, I'm going to take Nick, I got to take
A day off. Yeah.
Um, do we, do we want to have kind of some kind of wording that avoids that scenario?
Well, the last sentence kind of does that, if, for someone who's letting it build up for two years, saying the town, that's basically saying the town can tell you you have to use some of this time.
Okay.
We don't have to pay you.
Okay. Alright.
That's why I figured I'd copy what someone else did, because they've already been through every nuance of
Yes. It's always helpful to see what other people have done.
Because, again, I I had this at my own work, they'd let me build up too much time and they just walked up, said, need to take a couple of weeks off, because we're not going to pay you at the end of June, so take it off.
Okay.
We should check with Brandy and see if there's some report in Nemrex that will give you a printout of
Don't keep track of it.
Yes.
Yeah, because I thought now, this is the one thing I also wanted to run by Brandy, is how to keep track of the time. I know it's a little complicated, but it it avoids the problem of being forced to use a bunch of time at the, which is what our issue is.
Yeah. Yeah, so I'm making a note of that, too.
Because that, again, I didn't really want to adopt this piece until Brandy had said, yes, I can track it.
Yeah, we won't really adopt it until, you know, Brandy's had a good look at it, we've had a VLCT, somebody from VLCT sort of take a look at it, and I guess I'd like to have the road crew and the town clerk and town treasurer all look at it first. And and then, once, once it's sort of gone through the the hearing stage, we'll call it, and then, and we've got everything so that everybody's okay with it, then I think we can adopt it, but
Right.
I'd like to try to get this adopted pretty much in time for the beginning of the hiring process.
Yeah, and spring maintenance.
Spring maintenance, right.
Yeah. Instead of, is there any way you could change that from June thirtieth to June first? You have to use it by year B, by the first of June, rather than
Well, I think we could put any date we want in there.
Yeah, we can put anything we want.
You could have the year begin on June first and end on May thirty, whatever, you know.
I think, I think what Chuck Chuck is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chuck, but I think what Chuck is thinking of is that if we have it by June first, then there's a month left before the fiscal year ends. That they have to, you know, they have to come before the road commissioner and say, you know, I've only got a month left, I've got forty hours of comp time, I want to take it off before the fiscal year ends, so then there's at least a month to figure out how to schedule it, so it doesn't screw everything up.
I got you, yeah, I'm game braining, it works.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I I'm a little gun shy after last year.
Yeah.
That's the issue, we can't have a circumstance where everybody takes the month of June off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why we're here.
Yeah, I could even say May, May first, you know, if these, if somebody has been sitting on the comp time for, let's say, almost a year or over a year. You know, we, they need to, you know, either make an arrangement to take it off when it's not going to be compromising the work that needs to be done and giving, you know, giving them a couple of months.
I mean, a lot of people wouldn't want to take time off mud season, but that's the ideal time for them to take it off.
Right, go to, go someplace warm and dry.
So if you, May first, I, yeah, I like May first better, I think.
Okay, alright. We'll, we'll put that in. I made a note of it.
So we'll get it rewritten, Michael, then we can visit it again, just when it's not so cloudy.
Yeah, we'll look at it again, next, at our next meeting.
But I think it kind of accomplishes our goals.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think it does, too.
Yeah.
I do, too, you know, I don't, but the guy, but
Hope did we lose Chuck?
We we lost your sound, Chuck. Can't, we lost your sound. Know if he can hear us either. Oh, well, um.
You're mad.
Yeah, yeah, this is a good, um, meeting, meeting halfway kind of thing.
Yeah. Allows the road commissioner to turn it off if if it's being misused.
Yep, yep.
Good.
Okay, so, alright, so let's move. Holiday stuff is pretty much.
Yeah.
Set. So I guess that's a question. I think this question in bold here in red. Is more a question for like the V L C T review, I think.
Right, cuz yeah, they they just wanted to make sure that it counts as hours actually work a holiday.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Insurance. Insurance gets a little confusing over who gets it and who doesn't, but. Sometimes I think it would be easier just to have the town clerk and town treasurer have their own separate little section of what they. Get and don't get, but. Okay, so I'm. This is all boilerplate stuff. I'm gonna, I'm trying to get to that paycheck.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna let it go slowly, so I have some control.
We're doing here.
Yeah, this is all boiler, and this is, this is kind of the employee discipline. It's, um. You know, if we did have a problem and there's just different steps to take. Um, in the process of, you know, like, a verbal warning, a written warning, um, and then. Actually. Firing somebody, and they're pretty much steps that the town should follow. Otherwise, there are consequences. Back in when Harry was the road foreman, we fired somebody pretty much on the spot and. Because we didn't follow any of these steps. We were eligible for paying for unemployment insurance, unemployment payments for a while. But if we had followed these steps. Here it is here, right in this paragraph, a verbal warning, written warning, suspension. Usually that, there's a meeting for them to kind of correct, correct their. Their way somewhere in there, and then termination. So. Uh, let's see, okay. We're getting there. Okay, so there's. Okay, here's, here we go. This over. So here's. Here's the old chart. And then I put in, Paul, the steps.
Right, so the explanation here is we had the chart and that we were assigning steps every year. This chart copies the state's paycheck and their steps are based on the numbers of years you've worked. Um, so the thought is here, we either keep the steps in place and you get steps when they come. And then we would negotiate our annual raises, if any, that we were gonna do on top of that. So some years you'd have employees. Getting steps and some years you wouldn't have employees getting steps based on how long they'd been there. Well, you know, so, so I think to make this step chart that we have work, as Diana pointed out, we were giving the three percent raises every. Year based on this chart, which I don't know was the intent. Um, the step chart copied out of the state is what fixes it, or we just get rid of it and negotiate pay increases every year without.
But you could, you could do both. You could have a, your little tiny cost of living raise like you did this year.
Correct. That's what I would recommend doing.
Still have some reward for people who stay for two years, you know, like after two years, give them another step. Every year, that's a little much, but.
Yeah, this is copies the state system, year one through five or one, well, your step one's a six month step. You're on step one for probation. After your six months, you go to step two, which is one year. The next four steps are one year, then it's two years, then it's three years. That's exactly, I copied it right out of the state contract, which is where this chart came from.
Yeah, so would we, we probably would wanna create our own chart then at some point to go.
The chart, the charts, okay, you just, uh, once, you know, you ever.
I get it. Okay, I understand. Yeah.
Right.
So we'll keep the chart, um, and then, um, somehow relate the steps.
So, you know, using as an example, if you look at road crew, full-time pay grade eight. Someone brand new you hired off the street with no experience, you're gonna hire at seventeen twenty-five an hour, and six months, they're gonna go to seventeen eighty-seven. Then one year from that six month, they'll go to the step three of eighteen thirty-seven, and one year from that, they would go to eighteen eighty-eight. And then one year from that, they go to nineteen forty, but then it switches to two years. It'd be two years before they got to the step six after that.
Right, okay.
But they're still getting a cost of living increase every.
Correct, correct, and so we would, we would separate, we, that that way, we we purposely make a decision on what a cost of living increase is going to be. And then you you give that, and then you, if you have a step that year, good for you.
Yeah, so we could, we could put that language in there that there would be a cost of living increase.
Correct, we would negotiate. That way, someone who's not getting a step, if they were gonna get a one percent or two, whatever we were gonna give, that, that would still happen.
Okay, so I, what I'll do is I'll try to put in some, um. Some language to go with this, um, try to make it a complete, uh, unit or whatever you wanna call it, and we can look at that, um, next time.
The other dicey part of this is when you do give an annual cost of living, it bumps, it bumps these steps up to that, so. For example, if you give a one percent, the road, the new full-time road crew member would go seventeen point two five plus the one percent. So that every year that chart would change a little bit.
Okay, so that would be, it would be.
It's a little bit of clerk work. It's a, it's, it's that you're always, you're always, you always fit somewhere on that chart with your hourly rate.
But it could also be, uh, like a formula. The top, somebody who stays one year, they get whatever the annual increase for everybody is, and then on their anniversary, if they. A full year, they get like another percent, or every two years they get.
So if 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 each step, yeah, I like that idea of a formula, Diana, if each step, as it is now, represents about three percent.
About three percent.
Yeah, so we could, we could mention that, um. The, this, like, if it went from step one to step two, that, um, the, the increase to step two would be based on. Three percent of the present, um, whatever the present pay rate is.
That would, yeah.
Yeah.
Then we, and we could just leave, well.
And you wouldn't need it, though. You wouldn't need this chart. Just replace, just make a policy that.
Sure.
The select board is going to every year decide an overall, uh, cost of living. Uh, increase for all the staff people, and then, um, every, whenever they complete one year, two years of service. They get another.
Yeah, yeah, cuz again, I'm not married to this chart. It was just, this makes that chart work. If we wanna do something different, that's fine.
Yeah, well, let, let me try to put something together that, and we'll, I'll, I'll, hopefully I can do that, um. And get it to everybody so we can look at it for a bit. If there are any suggestions, um, could just send them to me, but we'll look, I'll, I'll. If, at the latest, I'll have this ready to look at again at our next meeting.
Okay.
Good thing is, the other good thing about the chart is that you, it gives you some starting salaries, and we don't have those anywhere else.
Right.
But maybe those should be negotiated every time somebody is hired.
Well, again, yeah, that, that's provided for in the pay, cuz you can hire someone in grade, you know, for example, if we hired another road person. That's already got ten years experience, you're gonna have to slot him in that chart somewhere.
Right, that's what we did with Grizz, you know, he had lots of experience, um, so we basically. Negotiated a step to a starting point as one of the steps.
We did that with Laura also.
Yeah, we did that with Laura, yeah.
Starting the assistant town clerk at ten, I mean, the, it's out of date anyways, because I think ten sixty-six isn't even the, uh. Minimum wage, is it?
Yeah, I'm not sure what it is, but.
And that's my point. If we stick with this chart, every time you increase everybody's pay one percent, say, you gotta raise every slot on this chart one percent. That's how you stay ahead of it.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll try to think of a formula.
Okay, yeah, let's, let's try to come up with a.
Yeah, cuz if you can't, you could do it with this chart. It's just you'd have to do it every time you gave a raise.
Mm-hmm.
The cost of living, it adjusts the chart. And that's, there's probably some spreadsheet wizard that can make that magic work, but it isn't me.
Mister Skip Lindsay could do that for us, definitely, and he probably would be happy to do it.
Yep, so that's possible then, you know, he could, Skip could build it in that we could just enter the, uh, annual. Cost of living increase, and it would automatically adjust the chart for us, but I don't know that.
I bet Brandy could do that too. That's basically sounds like a Excel spreadsheet.
Yeah, I'm sure you could do this in a spreadsheet. It's just a matter of somebody smarter than I am in that department.
Smarter than me too.
I'm sure I could do it, but it's one of those things I've chosen not to learn very good, very well.
Exactly, yeah, 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 so we could either have Brandy, maybe Brandy and Skip could, could, um, fix that for us. Okay, um, and I think that's pretty much it with the personnel policy. There's, let's see, let me just, so there's more of the steps, didn't fit on that same page. So, and then this, I'm not sure if you're aware of this, this is kind of an overview of.
Benefits, and yeah.
Employee benefits, um, and I, I guess, I'm kind of have to look at this and, like. I know that at this point, we don't have the Vermont Health Connect Platinum Plan anymore, so this needs to be updated a little bit too. It's an M V P plan, um, at this point. So, I'll, I'll go through, maybe I'll go through this with Brandy and we'll just update this at some point here. And then this is, um, this is kind of a passive. Thing, there is a whole, this is a whole booklet here, but there's a, I think, um. Harry and I went to a V L C T passive workshop, um. On, you know, what to do about different, um, if you suspect that there are different drug issues or alcohol issues for your employees. This is a whole manual. I ha- I have it, um, on my computer, the whole thing. If anybody wants a copy of it, I'll be glad to. Share it with you, um, but, um, so I know when we revised the personnel policy. One of the last times, we just put this in here, um, just so the, you know, our employees were aware of it. That's pretty much it, that's.
Okay. That regarding that drug, drug.
Yeah.
There is someone called a D E R, I think it's the drug, some, anyways, I think I'm it, and I shouldn't be it. It should be somebody that's more involved with the road crew that would take responsibility. I mean, I, I'm the only one that has. Email, I guess. They have my email, so when it's time to test somebody, they're through the random testing, I get the information. But, you know, all that's gonna have to be transferred over. I don't know if you'd wanna have Chuck or someone else do that, or.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So what, what Diana's talking about, Chuck, is that there are, um, is it passive that does that, Diana, or is it?
Yeah.
Are the, so the towns insurer, um, does random drug testing of all town employees? So what they.
Just the, just the, uh.
Just the road crew, basically.
Drivers with the.
The drivers with C D L licenses, is that correct? Yeah, so, I mean, it's called a random test, but they usually notify Diana. Of when it's gonna happen so that they can be assured that the, that the road crew member is at the town garage to pee into the cup.
That's a road commissioner thing.
Yeah, yeah, does kind of.
It should fit into the road commissioners.
So are you okay, Chuck, if we tag you with that? Yeah.
He'd have to go to the next training that they have.
Right.
I'm willing to be, yeah, turn your mic back on, Chuck. Your mic's off. I'll, I'll, I'll fly down to Florida and bring him the training. It's no problem.
You're too eager.
Probably would be a good thing, you know, for any road commissioner to, um, go through that training. I know they pretty much talk about what to be, to look out for, for different types of. Uh, drugs and and.
Michael, can you turn Chuck's mic back on?
Yeah, I got it, yeah.
Oh, you got it, okay.
I don't know if I, I guess I could have done that.
You can, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, yeah, no, I'm fine with doing that.
Okay.
And make sure that somebody's there to get tested.
Right. Right.
Okay.
I'll start sending you some of the emails so you can see what, what they do. I think it's some kind of a new system that, that involves some kind of a new sign-on that I haven't tackled yet.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Probably, yeah. So I'm gonna stop the screen share. Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. Alright. Anything else about the personnel policy?
No, shaping up.
Okay, that's kind of the end of our agenda. Is there any, I don't really have any, oh, I do wanna mention, um. Especially since I have Chuck and, um, Robin here, um. This coming Friday, and select board members are welcome to, um, take part in this. I can give you the contact information, but. This coming Friday, the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission and Dubois and King will be, um. Giving a presentation on, um, what's called a sixty percent designs for. Two of the sites in the village, um, where we've been working on this, um, long drawn out kind of erosion mitigation. Devices, um, for, to help keep stuff from going into the Kingsbury branch. And the two sites that we're gonna be looking at the sixty percent designs for on Friday, it's from one to two P M. Are the school, off the school parking lot, and behind the annex building, so. Those are gonna be, um, you know, pretty much indirectly involved with the summer work that we're gonna do in that area. That we got the Better Roads grant for. I was thinking of maybe inviting the civil engineer from Ruggles too, just so that. I kind of wanna have everybody kind of working together on this project, um, so that whatever we do to the roads. Doesn't, you know, compromise what they're trying to do with these basins and vice versa, maybe have the engineers. Kind of become aware of the different thoughts.
That's at one o'clock Friday, Michael?
Yeah, one o'clock.
Okay, they said, I, I should be, I gotta get my second COVID shot Friday, so everybody's getting sick, so I, I don't think I'll get sick till Saturday, though.
Okay, alright, um, and you know, this is just a presentation, so I'm not gonna worry about warning it as a select board meeting, you know. Right, even though we have.
No decisions are being made.
No decision, we're just taking in information and, and, uh, providing input into the design. So the, the, this process is, is that they've come and done some testing, um, there've been a couple of meetings about some of their thoughts. And they put together that it's called a sixty percent design, where, you know, they've got a pretty good idea of what they would like to have happen there, but. And then the, um, property owners, town folks, um, get to look at the design, hear the presentation, have input into it. And then they take that input and go back and, and work on the designs again, and then, um, come before the town again with, uh. Basically, a finished design, a hundred percent design. So it started out originally as a thirty percent design, um, and now it's, which was just kind of a rough thing before there was any testing done, and. So this is kind of step two in, in the steps. The other two sites, the one between the fire station and behind the post office, they've got to do some more. A little bit more testing, probing, uh, before they can come up with a design for that, and then the fourth site over on Church Street. Next to the Methodist Church, um, when we dug the test pit, it was all a ledge there, so they had a, the idea of another site. Across the road, um, that's basically property for the, um, car mechanic place, and I guess technically Larry Rossi still owns the property. And, um.
Well, he.
Yeah, I don't think he does now.
Okay, well, anyway.
He has a mortgage, that's all.
Okay, well, they, they didn't want, um, the infiltration basin to be there. So, um, the other thought was, well, maybe putting it over across, uh, Cabot Road in the park. And by the time we kind of came to that thought, um, winter set in, and so they have, they, in the spring. Early summer, they may wanna dig a test pit there, if we're all okay with, with, um, having that, the basin, the infiltration basin there. Hi, friend. Hi, friend. So, um, so this would be for those two sites. And, uh, we'll see what they have to, what the presentation is. But so Robin is, uh, you know, basically with the women's auxiliary kind of owning the property there, you're welcome to be there if you would like.
Okay.
And Chuck, just with your, you know, I know that we had talks with the engineer when he was doing the testing, you know, I, I think you would probably have some input on this whole thing.
I'll be there.
Okay, great. And Brian, you're welcome to come too if you want. Um, this, it's all, all stuff.
Yeah, just say you'll send us the link then and then I'll remember.
Send the link. And as far as I know from the school, I think Larry Eldred is going to try to be there. I haven't heard back from the principal and I just, it's more of a courtesy, you know, technically that's town property, so, but I, I do want to try to just include whoever might be involved or directly in or indirectly involved. And I might, uh, give that, uh, civil engineer from Ruggles just a heads up and see if he could attend too. I think it would be good for him to, to see what DuBois and King is thinking of and how that relates to the design that he.
And did we give DuBois and King their whole, he's got all that road profile on his computer and everything.
I believe so, yeah.
They have that. They don't have to redo it.
Yeah, yeah.
We already dug test pits and things on the road for him.
Yeah, yeah. And I don't think I've shared any of the information from, um, from Ruggles, um, with DuBois and King, which I probably should have.
Yeah, because we have plans. I think if we connect them, they can just merge their computers probably and get that data all in each other's computer.
Yeah, I agree.
That way we wouldn't be working against each other.
Yeah, and they could work together on, on.
Right.
Yeah.
Was this still working for the town?
No, but there might be some small charge if they become involved and.
Right, because again, we, he's done our road profile for that area for when we finally get it ready to pave at some point and I think I agree with Michael, we don't want to have one project working against the other. So the way to do that is make sure the two engineers are at least talking to each other.
Right. We, um, you know, it would be good to have the same civil engineer, hopefully he's still working for Ruggles who did that design, you know, because he know, he knows. He created it, so he, he knows it best. So we'll see, yeah. Even if he isn't able to come, I think I will, I probably connect.
Just at least connect them. They could share the data.
Yeah, yeah. Good, so that, yeah, so I'm glad I didn't forget to mention that. Anything else at all? I don't have, can't think.
I'm good.
Yes, yes, Robin.
Oh, Robin.
I got a call from Tim Higgins the other day telling me that he's got some free time now. If we still want him to look at the town hall, are we still thinking about insulating the town hall?
I, I would say yes.
Tim who? So still have him check out the electrical in there then?
Yeah, um.
Let's look at it.
Yeah, we had planned.
He said he could look at it and give us recommendations of what needed to be done.
Okay, that'd be great. We still have plans of, um, you know, I can't remember the woman's name. Diana, who, who, um, we were going to start in the spring, maybe having a little ad hoc committee to start.
Mary Joluen.
Yeah, thank you.
Because that would answer one of the questions.
So that would be good information to have.
Because if we decide to insulate eventually, if the electrician's already inspected, we know what's involved in doing it, if we have to do any wiring before we can do it. You can see Jefferson, New Hampshire's town hall just burnt to the ground. I don't think we want to be next.
No, no. Okay, good. Yeah, that was timely. Yeah, because spring's coming.
Yeah, that way at least that one question's answered when they're working on it. They can say if we decide to insulate before winter next year, we know we got a wire, we don't have to wire.
Yeah, right. Okay, I will call him.
Okay, I know when I had the attic or just the crawl space up above, we blew in some insulation when we were tightening up the house. They found some old wiring, so it kind of stopped the project, right?
Yeah.
Had to get an electrician to come and.
I probably look at four or five places a year where it's an old, older house and they have a fire in the attic and I say, did you have insulation done? Oh, yes, they just put it in a month ago. Did you have the wiring taken care of first? No, I didn't. And you find, you end up finding a bad connection buried in the insulation.
Yeah.
Because the weatherization comes, you're supposed to tell you to have all that wiring replaced that'll happen too before you bury it, because it's supposed to be air cooled. And once you bury it in two feet of cellulose,
Yeah.
All the hot connections get really hot and then the cellulose lights up and we're off to the races.
Okay.
Good, well, I think that's pretty much it on our agenda, except for the final item. Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're done.